CG was having this.
Call me, door. Let's record the play. I'll count them. President said Mr. Dixon. Before we move into department reports, I'd like to recognize Bo Lamphard. Bo, if you come up front. Reading notes there. I'll come over and shake your hand. That's good right there. Bo is an active Boy Scout. He's working on the citizenship, the community's merit badge. He worked on the pocket park in downtown. And he'll be here next week as well. I want all of y'all to congratulate him. I'll come over and shake your hand now because we're proud of you. Moving to the December month reports, starting with Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the code office report for the month of October. Things continue to pick up in the building around, so that's good. We had seven refineries in the month of October, but just about $12,000 in revenue. We had new businesses, we had 17 open and 13 that were closed. Some of that can be a little bit misleading because some of them are change of ownership where they're represented on both lists. But overall, still seem to be growing as far as businesses go. The city marshal run 29 repair cleanup quarters. He issued two citations and he also attended a 40-hour training class with the... And if you have any questions about the balance of the report, I'll be glad to try and answer.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Let's tell the county.
Thank you, Mayor. It's reflected by our mild weather over the past few weeks. We only used 11 million kilowatt hours in the last bill. The bill was 941,000. $589.29, that is well, well under budget. But maybe it'll get cold eventually. Telecommunications, give you an update from last month. We had a couple of users that were well above 1 TB. We have one this month. Two customers that we contacted that were well above. Once everybody dropped their usage significantly, did not really get an answer to what they were up to, but after our contact, they had dropped their usage down. The one that is on here right now is actually the housing authority. And talked with them today, and they made a mistake. They put in some new video camera systems in some of their locations. They're not here in Monroe. And one of their employees thought that they needed to stay logged into 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So they were streaming video from that site to their computer 24 hours a day for a bottom line. And we got that corrected today, so that should go down. Still 225 above 200 GB. We are still actively working toward a new number, that number of usage. That number's at 200, 250 in our existing rights or usage documents. And that number needs to be looked up. What people use their internet for now uses more internet than when we made this document. So we're working on some new terminology, some new wording for that document. We'll come back to you first of the year on that. And our peak usage is right around 1.4 gigabits. Now, talking to council members, and I think I've talked to several customers, we've been seeing two reasons for slow internet usage. Number one is our modems are staying online too long, which doesn't sound like a bad problem, but it is a bad problem. If your modem stays online too long, it's like any computer. If your computer stays on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, gets confused, it has problems. You know, you have to restart it, that kind of thing. Well, a lot of customers restart them, but if you've got a phone with your modem, you can't very easily restart that modem. It has a battery in it. It'll stay on. So we've written a script, some of the staff's written a script, that we're going to start next week, scheduling that early, early in the morning, four, five o'clock in the morning, Monday through Friday mornings, a different section of town, the modems will restart. So every other week, your modems will restart. That should solve a lot of the problems. The other problem is we are having, we only have one gig of traffic out of our CMTS. And we're hitting the top of that sometimes between eight and midnight. A lot of people watching more Netflix now. A lot of people are watching 4K Netflix, which is the super, super H-dip. Takes a lot of bandwidth. So we are, under the switch replacement program which y'all approved several months ago, we're getting hard going to the CMTS to solve that problem. Quadruple capacity of the CMTS. And we get down there and talk about the other stuff here. We have a pre-construction meeting on the Davis-Lacy reconductor project. That will probably not, that work will probably not start until January. We will alert the citizens in there. We'll get it on Facebook, let them know what we're doing. Just to remind y'all, we're replacing poles and replacing conductor in the Davis-Lacy Street area for reliability and for loss. We lose more energy in that copper to aluminum connection at the house than we would in aluminum-to-aluminum connection at Davis. We have several of the internal usable Wi-Fi hotspots. One of note is down in Good Hope, Good Hope store. Our employees have problems getting their Verizon phones to connect in the Good Hope area, so we can't see our diagnostic equipment or work on our gangplank. So we employed this down there. It's working fine. We're having some rule issues with IP addresses. Once that's done, we're ready to deploy 10 more in town. That will help us, public safety, Rodney's Department, all of the departments be able to have internet access without having a cellphone-based bill come up. These things are costing us right around $200 a piece. The technology has gotten tremendously cheap. And this will morph into next year a public-based Wi-Fi for the community here in Monroe. We did set a pole, and we're waiting on a meter to be set in our first residential wireless project. Not Wi-Fi project, but wireless project. That is out in Stonesdale area where we found that pocket of customers that really have no internet service. We're looking for the new customers, bring more revenue in the city, and I'll keep y'all posted as that project moves forward. Any questions? I'll truly take them.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. The financial report for the period ending in October 31st is before you, and everything looks like it's pretty much on track. It should be about 83% along with the revenue. Sales tax revenue, one thing to point out, is at 85%, so it's pretty much where we budgeted. So that's a good thing. And looking at our financial performance indicators as well, the local option tax, sales taxes lost, seem to be holding pretty steady, and they're actually trending up over last year, around $11,000, $12,000 more a month. So that's a good thing. Doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it does add up. So hopefully that will continue to go up. All the other revenue and expenditures are pretty much on track. Utilities are about to say the expenditures are only at 77%, but some of that could be... Some of their capital expenditures I know have not been charged out yet, so that would have an effect on that. But the revenue is at 84%. So the change in net position for the utilities, all the different divisions look really good at this point. On to solid waste. Their expenditures are only at, right at 60%, but so is their revenue off, but the revenue's at 73%. So it's a pretty good spread there. And I know they're trying to keep those expenses down since the revenue was also down. So all the landfill fees are in that expenditure amount as well. So that's a pretty true figure there. And to the splosts, as I said, it's coming in pretty much as we had predicted and budgeted. So that's a good thing. Performance indicators are all pretty much in line with what they have been over last year. Some things that we're working on, we're working on updating our travel and purchasing policies and hope to bring something before the finance committee in January to get those a little more timely and updated. And soon after that, we'll be asking you to adopt a P-card policy. We want to get that rolled out. This, again, kind of a long process. We just want to make sure that we get everything right before we implement that. And that will streamline our purchasing procedures and hopefully free up some staff time as well. And then I want to introduce Patrice. She's here tonight to talk about, a little bit about your upcoming Citizens Day. We mentioned that as well. And then to give a demo on the See Click Fix.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will first give the demo on See Click Fix. Excuse me, I'll have to sit at the computer to actually navigate the site. But this is a mobile app that we launched a couple of weeks ago that will allow residents to report quality of life issues. Quality of life issues are issues like sidewalks, tripping hazards, maybe road signs that have been knocked down, or are crooked, traffic lights that are out. We do not want, as you can see, this first issue here, we do not want people reporting emergency-type issues on See Click Fix. Of course, you know, I thank them for reporting the issue and just let them know that if there are wires down or anything that has to do with electric wires or gas-related issues, that we want them to call the emergency number and not report those online. I've got two issues here that I'm going to show you how to test. This is the See Click Fix homepage. If you are a resident and you go to seeclickfix.com, it will take you to a page that will allow you to put in your city. In order to follow the city of Monroe, you just type in Monroe, Georgia, and then you will see this page. The entire community has the ability to see all of the issues that are currently open and that have been recently closed. After seven days, the issues are archived into the dashboard. So go down here, and you'll see two test issues that are sidewalk-related issues. Well, once we get the email that there has been an issue posted, we have the ability to go in and write a comment. And then I can acknowledge this issue, letting the person know that we have in fact seen the issue and will create a work order for this issue. And then it will notify whomever posted the issue. But if you would like to follow this issue, you can do so. So anyone that lives in this area can actually click on the sidewalk issue and then either vote to fix it or follow it. And then you can also share it on Twitter, Facebook, and Google+. All right, I'm going to go to the reporting issue button at the top and show you how to actually report the issue. You can either drag and drop the pin to any location in the city of Monroe. Go to next, and then I can select a category. I'm going to pick, let's see here, pothole. And then it says, "Thank you for reporting this issue." And then I can type in a description. There is a trip hazard near Church Street. Where are we? Wayne Street. And then I can either upload a picture. Or I can just submit the issue. And then it shows up here in the issue section. Click back on the See Click Fix app, and it shows up to the public. And the great thing about the See Click Fix app is it allows us to actually see the reports and see how people are actually reporting the different types of issues. If you see here in this corner, it breaks it down. We've had two issues reported from the web, one from the widget embedded in the city's webpage, and then one that was city-initiated, and then one from an iPhone. And a couple of those are actually test issues. But here, it breaks it down into the categories. The key shows if they are actually open or closed. And then you can generate a printable report from this type of information. Does anyone have any questions on See Click Fix?
Patrice, if I use my iPhone with the app, do I have to tell you where it is for the GPS to your location?
You can actually, you'll have to still type in the address.
Don't move the pin, though.
No, you don't move the pin. Just type in the address, and it will update that on the issue. To get to... The App Store to download the issues, we have a handy-dandy little link here on the homepage that you can click on. Will take you to the See Click Fix section of the website where you can either report the issue from there or download the app from either the Android Store or the Apple iPhone Store.
Patrice, I think if you have your location services on, you can actually click.
Okay.
And it will pick up your location.
Okay. Any other questions regarding See Click Fix?
It is easy to do the app because I just know it.
It is very easy to use, and it's very user-friendly. Just go to the App Store and download it. Search it by City of Monroe, Georgia, or U Click We Fix. And you can download it into your phones. I keep an eye on it every day just so that we can see what's going on. And I'm excited that we actually have this app because it'll, you know, allow everyone to actually take part in helping, you know, us kind of see where issues are that we might not see on a daily basis and give everybody a voice in what goes on inside the city of Monroe. So that is See Click Fix. And then I also wanted to mention, December 10th at 6:00, we will be hosting our Citizens Workshop. This workshop will focus on winterizing and how to save energy during the winter so that residents aren't seeing those same types of energy bills that they saw last year if we can help it in that area. Just teaching them about caulking and doing things around the house, setting their thermostats at 68, not moving them up and down, and also just putting plastics over the windows and things like that. So it'll be very informative. We're hoping that we can get a big crowd to actually come out and listen so that they can, you know, learn a few tips. Any questions about the Citizens Workshop?
How are we doing about getting word out on See Click Fix?
We are marketing on Facebook. There was a press release in the Walton Tribune, also in the Monroe Local, and we are also using Twitter to get word out. In the future, we'll be, there'll be a story in the mail-out newsletter. The first one went out last quarter, so going to do another one next quarter, and See Click Fix will be a feature story in that as well.
I like that. Thanks, Peter.
All right, thank you.
Is that done on?
That's done.
Okay. By far.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every month of October, we had 115 calls for service. We had what we call a good intent, 221. Let me correct that. Yeah, that's right. The main emergencies, I'll give you the year-to-date on service calls, but the main emergencies for that month was 111 of them, and so it's the majority. The total calls for the month of October was 178. Big month training was 530. Some of them, we'd sent the captains and lieutenants to some company-level leadership training two and a half, three days, which was a real good, a real good experience for them. They brought back some good ideas and some actual, already put some ideas in place, especially in the area of some training that can be done on-site. But any of your questions?
Okay, no questions. Police Department, police department.
Police Department had 4,000, 4,613 calls for service, 17,000 calls for TV, 389 court cases. Part 1 truck crowds were 79, Part 2 116, arrested 121 adults and eight juveniles. I did want to make one comment on a community service that took place in October. It's not giving a commercial, but Dr. Dubose, they had a just tremendous amount of people turn out down there for the dental treatment, because he does that one day of free servicing. It was just a great community service and, you know, I suspect sometime when he recognized folks who did that part, you know. So any of your questions on the police department?
All right.
Mayor, I have one thing. I was going to send this to Chief Glass in an email, but if you've ever been through the 138 area on a Georgia football Saturday, you know how traffic gets backed up. But they, his guys are doing a great job out there directing traffic. I didn't see any long lines or wait times when I had to come through there. So that's something new that he's done, and I know we've got plenty of calls about that intersection, which we are doing everything we can to improve that and actually have a project coming up first of the year that will improve it. So I just want to say thank you.
Appreciate it. They do, and this is, most of those folks that work there were Georgia fans, so it was extremely hard part of this last Saturday. Appreciate that. Appreciate the comments, sir.
Okay, moving to South Voice.
Thank you, Mayor. Our stats are pretty consistent from previous month. We had a little, little bit of an increase going into the transfer station in October of 52,000 tons. And our collection, if you can see the chart, is pretty much, from a city's standpoint, the collection is pretty, pretty, pretty steady, actually decreased in some way. Only other thing I have is to remind everyone about the holiday schedules coming up, Christmas and New Year's. Take any question I ask.
All right. What's scheduled for trash pickup for my folks to go ahead and ask?
Okay. In December, the week of December, that's Christmas week, Monday is scheduled, December 22nd, we'll run our regular collection route. On Tuesday, December 23rd, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, customers will be picked up on Wednesday, December 24th, that's Christmas Eve. Thursday, customers will be picked up. There'll be no collection on Christmas Day and that Friday, December 26th. New Year's holiday, Monday, December 29th, Monday collection route. Tuesday, December 30th, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, customers will be collected. On Wednesday, December 31st, that's New Year's Eve, Thursday, customers will be picked up, and there'll be no collection on that Thursday. And Friday, we'll be picking up commercial customers on...
Okay. Thank you. Streets, transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Solid few areas for the month of October. Rented out the community building five times, and if you, just a general statement, if you got any desire to rent the community building, it's going to be way into 2015 this month, and it's full with exception of just a few days during the middle of the week, a lot of holiday parties and stuff going on on there. So it is a great facility, and it's going to be fully utilized for the month of December. Our fleet, maintenance division, we completed 128 services and work orders for that month. Our grounds crew picked up around 1,000 pounds of trash throughout the city. The street division, disreparers on a couple of streets in the city and did a four utility cuts. They are currently about a week out from completing the last round of right-of-way mowing through the city. Couple of extremely cold days in November along with the Thanksgiving short week we got behind on our cut. We're about a week out from completing that. Our street division's also currently five weeks into the leaf season. We picked up approximately 50 tons of leaves already. You know how much a leaf weighs? You get 50 tons in five weeks, and we're really just not getting into the bulk of it. We went through the first two rounds of the city in two weeks. Now we're about, we're getting probably one day in three. Takes us three days to get one day. So it's starting to slow up with that now, but hopefully before Christmas, we'll make another good dent throughout the city. Our sign marketing division is doing what they do. Every month, Steve does a great job with that, keeping, making sure we're meeting our regulations, they're keeping our signs, the reflectivity of those. I will say, we have done some training with another city. Without, kind of bragging on Steve, he's taught social circle, how to use the machine. They are beginning there, testing all their regulatory signs, and he's helped them get started with that. So just take a second to brag on him with that, bringing them up to speed. And our build maintenance division completed 57 work orders throughout the city in the month of October. Other than that, we're gearing up for a big night Thursday night with the parade. We'll be full force for that. Outside of that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
All right, no questions. Thank you. Water, sewer, gas, and stormwater, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Everything's pretty much at every division's turn along. There are a few water distribution that does the work order continues to be high this month, 823. These are because of the meter change-out program, these things they run across. It's an issue they want to go back to. There's a work order created. I did want to point out the wastewater treatment plan. You know that if you look at this year, how the treatments has decreased from 62 million to 40 million. This is because of our, we've been very aggressive in our wastewater collection system, pipe burst in our old sewer lines. So we really put a dent in the extra I and I that we get there from our pipe version, pipe version of these lines. Outside of that, the other thing I would like to mention, when the Georgia Utility Training Academy, we had a very good month, 81 students and all. So we had a really good, good month, and then we trained a total of 574 students this year. So had a one pretty good there. 4,795 water meters changed and out today. We're getting close to finishing that, and we also should finish up the Woodland plantation, that part of the project this week. And then we've got some, a couple more items to fix on Woodland that we've come across yesterday to date. We'll get those taken care of. And then we've also finished the 1,100 feet of pipe version on Bell B. So down in that project up to... Any questions? I'll be more happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
That ends the department reports. We're moving to committee information. Can I, if you have anything?
We don't have anything in the June of December, Mayor.
Thank you. Air Force.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one item. Matthew.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. If you'll look at your... Thank you, Ms. Scott, if you'll, uh, look at your agenda item there, it's a quote, uh, three quotes for a fence where we just got done paving Richard Parsons Drive, and to secure the airport, we need to put a fence, uh, excuse me, a gate up there, and it's gonna match the one that's on the Toll Street side, as well as, um, the gate that is on the Richard Parsons Drive that allows you to enter into the airport, the airfield area. Uh, the lowest quote being Larry's Fence Company at ninety-three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents, that's substantially lower than the other two, so that's what we're gonna, that's we go with that low quote.
Matthew, can you clarify the difference in the, did you look at this third quote, the safety issue that the guy brought up? They're really not apples to apples.
Let me pull, let me pull that up. Jeremiah, if you wanna speak.
Did you, did you, the photo beam, safety liability issue he's talking about, we could have if we don't?
Is that the se- secure item?
Yeah. I don't know if y'all looked into that, but.
The, um, the gate is, uh, is, we're proposing is, is what's there, and I'm, I'm not certain of any safety stuff that we have with this, with this area, caution that we.
I'm just saying, if you read the letter, the guy says there's a Georgia law that we have to do this, and if we don't, we're open up, you know, opening up ourselves for liability. I'm not trying, I don't even know who the company is, I'm just, um, if y'all didn't kinda fully vet that, we may need to take a look at it before we just go with a low bid.
Yeah, about, he was talking about UL three twenty-five standards, um. When, when he was quoting it, Jeremiah, that he did Larry's Fence Company or the other company mentioned his name about?
I'm not sure that UL three twenty-five is mentioned in the quotes, or considered. Maybe something we need to clarify before, before council, please.
Yeah, we can bring it before, uh, council.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all get a, you might get an answer tomorrow, I, I think we ought to do.
We need to put on that.
Ms. Scott, if you wanna just ask for motion to table it, until we get some next one.
Okay, it has been motion to, uh, second this, um, item until next week. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, pass, we'll bring it before the council next week.
Okay. Public Works. Okay, Public Works Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Georgia Pipeline Emergency Responders Initiative Membership and Pledge Agreement, Mr. Mel Brooks. Everybody denying this.
Oh, okay. I wasn't hearing this. Uh, this is an agreement, uh, it's been going on for some time, but the, uh, the chief may know something about it, too, the fire chiefs, uh, they've been up several meetings over the gas safety, and, uh, trying to get the, the, the fire and police on board as far as understanding what we have to have on the gas side and getting them trained. Uh, all the, the fire departments all have the same issue, they don't have the money to, to do the training. Well, Public Service Commission's come up with a program, and, uh, basically what it's gonna do is, the, the gas systems with all pitch in, our, our cost would be, uh, twelve, twelve hundred dollars a year. Basically, all the gas systems would pitch in, they're fair share, and will provide the training, this will provide the training for the fire departments to attend, for all the, uh, the safety, uh, the gas safety, uh, stuff, and we're not getting any of the safety training, unfortunately, is all the, the place that presides. Uh, the best, best one is the system agreement they're asking all, all the gas systems to participate in.
Do we have a program set up to do this train, this training? We do?
So who's this training?
It'd be for all the fire departments.
Public Safety, Gipstick, uh, Georgia Public Safety Training Center, that's what you, yeah.
But do our pict- our firemen get trained?
Our firemen go, I'm, I'm assuming they go there.
Yeah.
They go there?
We use Gipstick, and the police department use Gipstick, they have a, uh, it probably gotta sit up in one of the houses down there, they got burn houses that go up to three stories high, and it's, uh, uh, that'd probably be a good road trip one day, or, or something to go look at with the Public Safety Committee, but it's, uh, you know, we, we've always gotten some training from, uh, gas line, they, they'd have us out, and they'd tell us about the gas line and, and their responsibilities, but, uh, I just think this is an effort by state to get everybody on the same sheet of news, to have one training standard, and that's probably why everything's going to the Public Safety Training Center.
So they want us to join and become members of this, and the funds are gonna be?
Partnership, yeah, and all the gas system would, it's based off the number of me, uh, number of, uh, we'll go back to it here, it's based off the number of service lines, so we would, we would fit into the, uh, twenty-five hundred to five thousand, so it'd be twelve hundred dollars a year.
And they're gonna use this money to supplement the cost of this training? And still, still charge for the training?
From my understanding, it would be free to the fire departments, there's no charge to them.
The training would be there, and we'd, we'd still be in, our employee goes down there on our, on our dime, but the training itself and the facility, you don't get charged for the actual training, like much of the, you know, very rarely is there any type of police training down there, public safety training, where they have a, an additional cost to it. Uh, it's, it's, uh, nine percent of it's already done unless they have a special kind of fence they have to get an outside trainer for.
If, if this is from Public Service Commission and state driver, do we even have a choice in it?
We do have a choice. The reason I had to put it on there was I was looking at why I had to present a base plan to do it, and we can offer the same training at our place, we don't call them too, so that's one reason, I, I'm still looking into it, to see if there was any reason for us really to, to join.
It's just an annual commitment, for twenty-four months, or?
It's, uh, it'd be twelve hundred dollars a year, so.
As long as, as long as they don't come up with some kind of standard, right, saying you got to have a cert- certificate, and if they say the only, and I don't know, I'd have to do some research, so, but if they say the only place you can get a piece of papers, and then they require you to have a piece of paper, you know, that, that would be the only thing, but if they don't require you to have, as long as you meet the same standard, I don't know why it'd be a, an issue, but I think if something, I guess me and you both need to research, make sure it's not gonna be a, some that comes up later and says, well, you didn't train at the standardized, that's just, I can do certain training and get credit for it, police department through post, through Gipst- I mean, it's approved post-training. If I do a certain level training, I have to have a certain type of instruct, and it has to be done, you know, uh, I don't think this is to the point like post is and stuff at this time, I, I don't.
This, they, they've been meeting for what, two years, three years now, I'm trying to get something going. The meeting's actually started, that, our training, our training's, we were involved from, at the beginning, for some reason, they decided to, to go elsewhere.
Well, I do think I'd like, if y'all would, to look into it a little bit more, and, and basically, in the best interest of the city, the fire department, if the chief would give us his recommendation, and I think you basically gave us yours, and, uh, maybe we table this to look at next month. Is there a motion from the committee to table?
Sure, I'll make a motion, we table it, but at the same point in saying that, I think in, for twelve hundred dollars, we don't wanna buck the state from trying to do a unified kind of thing, so we won't keep that in mind as we look at it in next month.
I, and I agree with you on that, as to, um, you know, trying to work together, and, and, um, but, um, and that's, I guess, would be taken into consideration in the chief's recommendation, too. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in committee say aye?
Yeah.
Aye? All right, we'll table that. Uh, the McDaniel Street Space Cable Project.
This is a second phase and a three-phase project, we've looked at over the past couple of years. First phase was bringing out, um, the Fourth Circuit out of Station Two, um, up by the Baptist Church to McDaniel Street to get more load and onto that circuit. This phase will take that circuit from the Pine Crest, McDaniel Street intersection out to Brilo Drive to bring more reliability to the hospital circuit. Uh, the hospital, Home Depot, McDonald's, uh, Grado's area, more liability there. And then the third phase will bring that circuit from McDaniel Street down to Wayne back to this office, uh, clean up that little corridor, uh, sort of back in behind Buckles and the police department, and bring more liability to the circuit, uh, coming to this office. Uh, this will be done as a spacer cable project, um, y'all are probably familiar with these, we've done several of them, and the one behind, uh, Quality Food, one over here back in behind North Broad, Zander Furniture, and then the one on, uh, McDaniel. The total bid is thirty-nine thousand five hundred, uh, eighty-two dollars, and that will be done with our employees, and it will probably start sometime late first quarter of, uh, next year. That's about how long it'll take to get the material, I want y'all to approve it.
Brian, you said this phase is Pine Crest to Brilo?
Yes, sir.
I would assume that the only reason you have one bid is these?
They are the only.
Ones making the spacer?
We sell for the Hendrick spacer cable in State Georgia. We pick Hendrick spacer cable because it's the same that's used in Charlotte, not in Charlotte, in, uh, a pretty coastal town in, in.
Charleston.
Charleston. Uh, we looked at that, we looked at also a different that is used in a couple other cities, and this is a better overall product.
And this is part of the capital projects that were approved for this year?
This year, they will get the material, you know, out of this, this year, C I P, we'll do the work, and it'll be charged this year, C I P, but then next year, if y'all approve, uh, the next one we'll order, we'll try to get that one done in next year. What's taken up most of our time this year is this South Broad T, um, trying to get that square away, get out of their way.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move, we, take this to the council next week and go approve.
So motions are second?
Second.
Motion's second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We will take that account next week. Meter test equipment, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir, and, go ahead and get this, this, uh, we only have one quote on this also, we're, we are trying to get other quotes, one directly from the manufacturer, and one from a company called Tulsa, and others nationally known, uh, represented. What I'm asking tonight is to spend up to eighty-six hundred dollars, because that's the only quote we got in before the meeting, and that is a local vendor here out of Loganville. This, uh, D-SAM sixty-three hundred actually does DOCSIS three, um, internet testing, I know that may mean a lot to you, we are selling, we've been selling DOCSIS two internet for years, that's the internet that'll get you up to about thirty, thirty-five megabits per second, but we're selling internet now up to fifty, a hundred megabits per second, and we don't have the test equipment to really, we're using our test equipment to make it work, but I need to be able to look deeper into it. It also about, allows us to do more efficient testing of the H D channels, we have, some of y'all noticed, we have some breakup on the H Ds, and we have a hard time finding the problems because our existing test equipment doesn't go to the level that this equipment does. This is a known upgrade, we'll be asking to upgrade another one in next year, C I P. Uh, most of our meters are six to eight years old, and they're at the end of their lifespan. We will not quit using it, we'll keep up with the software and move them down to a, a lower level employee that doesn't do the in-depth testing that, uh, our two, uh, main tech, uh, technicians do. And I'll take any questions. But again, it's, it's to, it is to up to eighty-six hundred dollars, and we budgeted ten thousand dollars for that part.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Is there a motion to recommend to council that we purchase the testing equipment?
I make the motion, we approve it, uh, send it to the council for approval to a maximum amount of eighty-six hundred dollars.
So motions are second?
Second.
So motion's second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We will move, recommend that to council. Thank you, Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you. Public Safety.
Uh, Mayor, Council, we've got one item on the agenda tonight under, uh, public safety. Uh, Chief, you wanna take it?
Thanks, sir. What, I've put you a packet together, and we have a support letter from, uh, Ms. Anderson, uh, D D A, and, and Sage is kinda familiar with the concept, and, uh, Captain Armstrong and Fire, Fire, Stone has, has worked through this project, we've talked about it, the concept, I think, is, is a good concept. Uh, basically what I'm asking for tonight is your permission to seek, uh, a grant that would support this, uh, project. It's a, it's a, it's a really a three-phase project that, uh, it's a city awareness and preparedness, uh, program. The first phase would, would be training, uh, our city employees, and it's, it's first date training, C P R, uh, training in the use of, uh, defibrillators. Then when we train located businesses, business owners throughout the downtown, I think this area actually will spread if we get it, uh, get everything worked out. You're looking, uh, you're looking at from the time that we would begin to the time we actually had the program going, probably eighteen to twenty-four months before we got everybody trained, everybody up to speed, and it's, there's a lot of information in it, but really tonight, what I'm asking you to do is, uh, give me permission to, uh, talk with Walton Healthcare Foundation about the concept of it, and see if I can get their interest in it to, uh, possibly to grant funding of it. So I need your permission to go there, and then we, we, uh, probably, uh, by February, we'll know whether that's feasible or not feasible, but, uh, what, what you would do is normally we have about twelve or so professionals inside the city that's working on that, and that's, that's fire and police condition, maybe fourteen, fourteen will be the, the backs. You know, if you do this training with all the downtown training events we have, and we, we have a lot of people in downtown, uh, you know, we go from about a, uh, ratio of one to five hundred people, one responding to five hundred, to a ratio of about one to thirteen or fifteen, that somebody's trained that can do that initial, uh, basic life-saving stuff. And if, the meat cutter at John's Supermarket knows I'm using defibrillator, and there's one that happens to be there, and I go in there and have a heart attack, and she gives me started back up, it's worth it to me, it'd be worth it to any, anybody, any other system. So, but basically all I'm asking for tonight is your good gracious sake. Uh, seek, uh, so I can seek funding through, through, uh, Walton Healthcare Foundation.
Thank you.
Sage, you, you got any funding, it's you?
I think it's a really innovative program, um, I don't know of another downtown that hasn't looked at, are we taking care of the people that come to the town center running off here? When we have a concert or event that brings five thousand people, we're, we're mismatched with. When we have a concert or event that brings 5,000 people, we're mismatched with the emergency response that we can offer. And so I think it's a creative idea. It's innovative. I don't know of another city that's doing it, and it's an added service to our, to another reason to live in Monroe, to do a business in downtown Monroe. I really applaud the Captain Armstrong and the Fire Department for putting this together. It's really creative.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? We'll bring this to full council next week. That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Big non-impact votes?
Mayor, council, I had the opportunity recently at the Downtown Appreciation Dinner to see Ms. Crossy do a presentation on some of the really great things that have happened to Monroe over the last 12 months, because of the year-end review. And I've asked her to redo her presentation again tonight for, for those of us here, because it's, what it told me is even though I think I'm involved in some of this, and I think I know what's going on, when I sit back and really see what all has been accomplished is something we can all be real proud of and, and feel good about, and we need to celebrate these accomplishments. So I think you're going to ask us to turn around and look at the screen, and Ms. Crossy will do the presentation.
And I apologize for some of you just coming here for a repeat who are at the Downtown Appreciation Dinner.
That's all right. It's good to see you again.
Correct. That's a dinner where we honor our volunteers, the local businesses that have won awards in 2014, and our sponsors. And so it's really important, and when you look at the year as a whole, it's amazing all that's happened in one year. So I'm excited to get to talk about downtown some more. I'll have to click over here. Okay. Earlier in the year, we, actually in September, we launched the My Future Monroe, which you all knew about for your development. We launched, launched this online tool, people to kind of share the things that they love about Monroe as a city as a whole. It wasn't focused on downtown, but one of the questions we asked is, what would you say are the best qualities about living in Monroe? What would you say are the most attractive features that draw people to visit Monroe? And these are some of the comments that came from that. Yeah, can you keep going? True historic downtown. Real made in Georgia producers, a love for churches and ministry, and it's walkable. A place you're proud to show off. Where family-owned businesses, specialty shops, and privately-owned restaurants should be and should thrive. The weekend activities downtown are what attracted me to the Monroe area. You can really have it all here. Small-town feeling, and it's still the old style. A real downtown with unique shops. Keep downtown quaint, historic, and mutable. And so what was interesting about this is this was all about downtown unsolicited. And so I really wanted our sponsors and our businesses and our volunteers to see that they've helped create something, a real asset to Monroe, that when people think of Monroe, they think of the historic downtown, they think of all that's happening here, they think of our events. And I agree with all of this. When I read these, it just, I just felt like going, yes, yeah, that is what we have. It's so unique. And that's what people are talking about, not just locally, but at the state level. So also this year, we will recognize, you all know this, it'll be a repeat, but at Georgia's Downtown Conference in Kater, Georgia Downtown Association, we won two awards, a state-level recognition, click through. You can see Janice's name, Janice Rowe, right there in the Volunteer of the Year Award. We won the Volunteer of the Year Award and Excellent Design of the Pocket Park. And Janice was the only recipient of that award in the whole state, because they were so impressed with her efforts to bring back Monroe Girls' Court, the Christmas Parade last year, and her work in the Pocket Park. All of our sponsors from 2012 and 2012 will recognize by bricks in the Pocket Park, too. So we also have public community service from the, the kids from the juvenile fort system helped build the park. So many people helped make that possible, and it's just a real picture of what happens in downtown Monroe, which is partnership, people working together. And when you see a good idea, everybody jumps in and makes it even better. Click through. There's a picture of us at the award ceremony. Keep going. And with this award, we had, we had mentioned in the Georgia, sorry, it's going to be hard for me clicking, in the GMA newsletter, which some of you may have seen that, Monroe was featured in like the, through the area roundup in District 5. We have a picture of the Pocket Park, so we're mentioned in all the cities in GMA newsletter, and the governor did a press release honoring Monroe and other award recipients. So we're getting mention on the state level for positive things, and that's great for our city whenever that happens. Other awards that we had in 2014, you may not remember because it was all the beginning of the year last year, but we won that grant from the Georgia Council for the Arts and the Georgia Communities Council to host the state art exhibit, which featured folk artists from all around Georgia. It's part of the official state's art collection, and it came to Monroe. And with that, it brought a dance group, and they did programs in the schools. This picture here at the bottom, that's Harmony Elementary, the first grade student. They watched the dance program, and then all the first graders broke up into second, smaller groups with the dancers and did an art project in response. And so being able to do creative things like that, they gave us, they gave us money to host this exhibit. That was a partnership with the Monroe Art Guild and Monroe Downtown. Also, our farmer's market, we participated, we were nominated again, I love my farmer's market online poll, and we ranked at the end of the online voting all summer, we're number 22 in the nation and number two in the state of Georgia on the rankings of farmer's markets. So we're very proud of how that's growing. It's a great, it's a growing market. We have a big market with great farms, great artists represented, and again, a lot of people put work and effort in to make that possible. So we love the market, we're really proud of that. And also, we found out, actually the night of the banquet, that we have been chosen as a wholesome way partner market. This is a program where they match, it's a, they double the food nutrition supplement value for anyone who comes to our market. So basically, if the most needing our community, they can come get fresh produce, and when they spend a dollar in our market, it counts for $2 on their supplemental nutrition benefits. So that makes our market even more attractive to our local community. So we're very excited about being chosen to be a wholesome way partner. Keep going. This year, we also installed the Project Road Share Trailhead. This is right behind, right beside Old City Hall, but please seen it there. And this is Duncan Watts, he did this as his Eagle Scout project, you probably saw the story on Monroe Local, is featured in the, in the paper, Walton Tribune this weekend. His picture was right on the front page for doing the trailhead. But that was part of a grant that we were awarded along, in partnership with Walton Wellness, to bring Project Road Share to Monroe. So you've probably seen these signs around the city. This is the third trailhead to go in in Walton County. There's one in Good Hope was the first one, then Social Circle, and now we have Historic Routes, and we've also mapped out the historic walking tour around downtown, and that was part of the grant. So that went in. The sponsors from 2013 to 2014 are on the bricks in that park, which includes some of you, council members. So thank you for your support. Go find your brick, and it looks beautiful. He did a great job. You can click. We had a ribbon cutting with the Chamber of Commerce on November 18th. We had a great picture from that. And we're excited about encouraging the cycling community to come to Monroe more. This past weekend, we were coming back in town from being out of town for Thanksgiving and saw a huge pack of cyclists on Saturday when we were driving back into town, right here in Monroe. It's like, yay, that's what we're trying to do. Come back, spend money, stay. You can go ahead. So click it again. This is the picture of the whole trailhead there, and you can see the different sponsor bricks. It really looks nice. We're very pleased with how it turns out. I think it's the most attractive one that's been done in Walton County yet, so we're really pleased with that. Also, around Old City Hall, you can click forward, we, this year, this tree, this magnolia gentry was donated and planted in memory of Mary Ann Phil McKenna. So there we are after we dug the hole and planted it. And what we use to plant it is, there's a trailer, that's a community trailer, it's available for community gardens, any group to use all those tools. Krista Carroll helps manage that. And just another neat thing that's come about because of the people who love the outdoors and who love planting and taking care of the environment around Monroe, we have this trailer that's available for community use, and we use those tools to plant this tree. And it's also right there in the lawn across from the trailhead. Also this year, we've seen Sculpt Monroe, another partnership with the Monroe Art Guild and DDA. And these are the sculptures that you've seen. I think people are just beginning to realize that they're not going anywhere for a while, but they're going to be here and still asking questions. Now we have little plaques installed beside each one, so you can learn about the artists and what they, the story behind the sculpture. But these are the four sculptures that we have around town. They're already generating some great pictures. I see people taking pictures with the giant eraser all the time, and my kids love them. My kids seem to love them and notice them even before adults do. So it's kind of fun to be going through town, and they want to run and see the popsicles. I'm like, okay, I don't know why, but go, sure, go look at them. So we're glad to have that, just another interesting thing in downtown, and it reflects local artists. Two of the artists are from Walton County that have done these sculptures. Go on. Also this year, we had our first round of Monroe Summer Interns. This was mainly a project through Grace Monroe, and they partnered with local organizations to find them jobs and positions. They lived in downtown for all summer. They came to a council meeting, that picture is actually right outside the council meeting when they were there, and they just learned a lot about Monroe. They met many of you, and they did projects while they were here. They mentored neighborhood kids, they, two of them worked with the city, and they were incredible. And one of the ones that worked with the city is coming back to work in Monroe with a consulting firm. Very excited about that position for her. And the other, John, wants to come back and work again next summer. A lot of these kids are looking at Monroe as a place to live because of their experience here. One of the projects they did, you can see on the left, is the library mural. It's finished now, it looks great, and that was part of a project that the works done has finished, the painting of the gold and the rest of the lobby. Sherman Williams donated the gold paint and all the paints for it. So again, just a great community project where when people step forward, so they want to do something, everyone says, how can we help? We help make it happen. This little girl on the bottom with the orange backpack, she was coming to the library just to get books, and she ended up staying and working all day with her college kids on the mural. So that was really cool. Well, in downtown, the main thing that our sponsorship dollars go towards, and a lot of our effort as a city, is our events. And so here are all the events that happened in 2014. We had Winter Fest, we had the Downtown Chocolate Walk, which was a new event, and we had the Car Show, which was, again, the largest car show we had. And we're known in the Car Show for the amazing awards. So those are the awards that Laura Peters made. She is an incredible volunteer. If you love the Car Show, please tell her, because she makes that thing happen. She's already passed out over 500 flyers for next year's show at other car shows, and she does an incredible job, and we're, we're known for the Car Show. It won the Walton Tribune's Best Community Event in 2013. Keep going. Also, we tried the Monroe Antique Days, trying to promote our antiques. And what that's done, I think it drew more attention to our antiques, and it's going to partner nicely with now a Chamber and CVB effort to do an antique festival in Monroe for all of Walton County. So we tried that. We also had the farmer's market that went all summer, the biggest crowds that we've seen yet, and the largest market as far as vendors that we've seen we had this year. First Friday concerts were great. None of them were ranked out, thank goodness. We had great concerts all summer. Keep going. We had the first movie at the Mill, which was very successful, and was also the recipient of a community event grant, which is a new program DDA is doing to encourage private or, to encourage private organizations or individuals to do events that support local nonprofits. We help offset some of the costs by matching their expenses on a very minimal level, but it just helps us say, we love it when you do an event downtown and when it supports a local organization. Along with that, they also had Food Truck Friday, which they've had two of those since the Mill, and both of them were successful. My favorite story about Food Truck Friday is the food trucks were very hesitant to come, because they didn't know how we can eat out here, apparently. And so they didn't want to come at first, they thought, there's no way that you're going to be able to provide enough sales to make it worth our time. All of them sold out at lunch, and then they all sold out again at dinner on the night of movie at the Mill. And when they came back, we didn't have to make any promises. Now they know that it's a great destination, with people who will come out and pay $8 for fries and cheese. So, next. We had our taste of the market. We partnered with Athens Tech Culinary School to do this event, and it helps send their students to competitions. So we split the profits with them, tried to feature some local restaurants. It got ranked outs, we had a lower turnout, but we still were able to raise over $400 for the students to go and compete in competitions, which helps that culinary school be a higher level program. We also partnered with Walton Proud, and they did a Farmer's Day Market where they brought all kinds of school groups out. It was wonderful to see our local schools represented in Monroe. It was a wonderful day. We also sponsored the Agro Cycle Tour, which comes through Monroe, starts and ends at the Harris Homestead, and it's a, works with, part with Walton Wellness, and the farmer's market was a part of that. And they basically go to farms and tour, and they had the biggest participation they've had yet. Also this year, we had Fall Fest. It was the largest fall fest we've ever had. We also started the Calls in the Park Road Race, which was a huge success. This little puppy here was the first, the first place dog finisher in the 5K run, did great. And we raised over $3,800 for the, for the dog park in Childers. So we're going to use that to get that park going beginning of next year, and also continue to do more improvements in Childers to really capitalize on that incredible 17-acre passive park that we have right in downtown Monroe. There's a picture of the Great Zip Line right along here in City Hall. It was the largest fall fest we've had yet, great turnout, beautiful weather, and we took the risk in spending more money to do these great events, but we made it all back in event fees. Good events. Yeah, there's more. We also, there's more. Yeah, Light of the Night, we did that as another smaller event where you go into businesses with live music. Keep going. There's pictures from that. We partnered again with the, with the Art Guild that did an art wall. They put original, local artist work in each of the stores. Last Saturday was Shop Small Saturday. We, today went and collected all the little, if you went to 10 businesses, you got a stamp, you got entered into a raffle. Went today to the businesses to collect all that and ask them, how was your day? How was your weekend? We heard from two businesses that they had the largest retail day they've ever had last Saturday, and we don't think it's going to be the biggest one of the shopping season. So we're very encouraged by that, lots of positive response. We're just so proud that it's becoming a destination to come shop. Coming up this week is our Christmas Parade. This Thursday night, we had our meeting last night with all the parade entries. It's going to be a big one, just like last year. The weather should be perfect. We're honoring our veterans, and we're very excited about the turnout, the response we've had so far. I think there might be one more event. Yes, and candlelight shopping will happen for the end of the year. The reason I want to show all these is because these would not be possible without our sponsors and without the incredible support of the city. We don't pull off any of these events without amazing cooperation and help from public works, from police and fire departments, and even, even utilities helps us do everything that we do when it comes to putting up decorations and just getting things ready to make downtown a great place for events. And I think it's also important for us to realize that we raised over $30,000 sponsorship this year to pay for these events. So these are local businesses and individuals who say, this is important, we want to support continuing to make downtown a place for things to happen, a place for memories to be made. And last year, in just our downtown events, so just the ones that we sponsored with the city, and go ahead, we had over 30,000 people that came to downtown at our events. That's not counting all the additional events through the library, the Art Guild, McDaniel Tishner House, all of our event venues, people coming in for weddings. That's just our events when we calculate our numbers and turn them into the state. So that's significant for that many people to come, just to see something fun happening in Monroe. The funding that we also raised goes to help support our programs through DDA, such as the PESIDE grant and the community event grant that I mentioned. That first one was at the PESIDE grant recipient, that's the Cotton Cafe. There you go. That's before, that's what it is now. Another recipient this year was, you might recognize this, is the corner of Davis Street and Madison. That's still in our downtown boundaries, and that's Elsie's Corner Market. And they're continuing to do improvements. Actually, they've done even more since this picture, but that was the most recent one that I had. And they're continuing to renovate that and take on the little houses right next to them. So we're very excited to see that happen, and so glad that we could help support that effort. Another PESIDE grant winner was Sailor Studio. And at the time that we did the presentation, you can click it, they, we just had the plan of what they were going to do. They're still working on it, and that's, that's what they did. So we had three PESIDE grants this year. Also, our community event grant, which I mentioned, was the Movies at the Mill. They partnered with the Monroe Museum, and so the proceeds from that event went to support the museum effort, which we're very excited to see more partnerships, to see that actually become a real place in downtown Monroe, hopefully in the next year. And so this was one of the Monroe In-N-Out programs that they did here at City Hall, and that's the third that they've done, hopefully they'll do more, just to be able to have a permanent exhibit, a permanent way to interact with our incredible history. That's actually a picture of downtown. I'm sure you can tell that.
And Santa used to sit in that little house right there. We would go visit. That's where we went to see Santa Claus went on.
These are our new businesses that we had in 2014, just in downtown. As it was the ones that they opened and look, since you're just the ones that have opened, stayed open, and are still with us. And so that's great to have all these, and that doesn't even take into consideration the expansions we have. For example, Blue Town Printing expanded into a larger space downtown, made a capital investment of over $25,000 in bigger, newer printers, and their business is growing and being able to do that here in downtowns. Grace Monroe has expanded in downtown. Encore Performing Arts Studio expanded from one space to two. Rents has expanded in downtown. So I, it's really fun to see businesses that started in downtown and are growing in downtown. So that's all just in 2014. Oh, next. Also, our businesses are starting to get recognition at the national level. For example, Studio E, which is in downtown, she was chosen to be a part of Professional Photographers of America. So this is a shot of when they came to town to videotape her little interviews for the things that they do, and they promote her as part of a national network of photographers. And they're right in front of Carol. Go in, when they're doing this, which is great. Go ahead to the next one. Also, so hopefully you're familiar with the Country Living Fair. There's one up in New York, and there's one in Atlanta. These are very, you pay to basically go in and spend money. And it's a lot of handcraft, handmade goods would love to be a part of this. And we had two Monroe, downtown Monroe businesses that were represented, not only represented, but featured by Country Living and put in prime locations. And what's so fun is, we went to this show to promote the Antique Festival in Monroe to tell vendors to come next spring when we host that. And when we would tell them, "Monroe, they go, 'Oh, I'm in Monroe, I have a booth there.'" Or, "We shop in Monroe. We come to Monroe all the time to get..." And these are vendors and makers who are selling things to cities all over the southeast that come to Monroe to get their raw product to resell and recreate. And also Rents, still click again, they sell on a permanent basis now in Disney. So this is one of their spots in Disney, and so that not only is just national recognition, but actually, it's international recognition with how many people come through Disney World. So there at Disney, you can go find them there, as well as in Monroe. And everywhere they go, all these people talk about, "Well, we're from downtown Monroe. We make our product in Monroe." Not only that, we also had Davis Street Antiques, which is featured in Flea Market Style, which is a national magazine. Quite an honor for it to be mentioned. And right there, it says Monroe in big letters. So we're very proud of that. James doesn't like to brag, but he has a lot to be proud of. He's done a great job there. Go ahead. And also, just wanted to mention that the Chambers efforts with promoting the antique capital of Georgia in Walton County, all the things that they have made are in all the visitor centers in all the states, at the state line, whenever you come to Georgia. So every time you go there, you see the Antique Capital of Georgia rack card, and on the back is a big map of Monroe saying, "All that we have here," and hopefully drawing more visitors to come to Monroe. And because of this effort, we've partnered with them to help do the Antique Festival next April. So this is the card, this is the things that we're passing out at the Country Living Fair. Also went to Scott's Antique Market and just helping get the word out that we want this to become the premier antique festival, definitely in Georgia, but we'd love it to be in the southeast. At our, at our, our dinner, you have to listen to me the whole time, but we actually brought up members of our DDA board to present local awards. And Charles Sanders came up and told great stories, hilarious stories about Miss Betty Buckles, and really want to honor her because she is slowly stepping out of her role in Buckle. She'll still be there, obviously, and still committed to downtown, but I was handing that over to Michelle and her son. They're gonna be kind of running the store. So we just wanted to honor her and celebrate her years of service, and Charles personally was saying, "Welcome to her retirement," which I think he's doing a lot more, he always is saying a lot for downtown. He's still everything and helping make things happen. So our DDA board, and I just would love the council to know this, they're an incredibly hardworking and committed board. When I go around the state and talk to other cities and other people in my position in those cities, one of the most common issues they talk about is, "How do I deal with my board?" We don't have that issue here. We have a board that supports downtown with their time, with their energy, with their money, with every resource they have. They support it, and they work, and they're always trying to do the next project, and how do we move this forward? How do we do more? And so we have, we should be proud of the volunteers that we have that are making downtown development possible. So we honor Miss Betty, and then we brought up the, our DDA board members serve as chairmen of local committees, the four-point committees of the Main Street Strategy that make up downtown. So the Promotion Committee, actually Leigh Anne helps run this, and we honor a Volunteer of the Year, which was Monroe Junior Women's Club. They donated the planters and the plants in the Pocket Park. And they also showed up and volunteered and really helped make the Falls in the Park Race possible. And not only that, they call us. We don't call them and say, "Hey, can you help?" They call us and say, "Hey, we're helping, we're gonna show up. What do you need us to do?" And so we honored them this year as the Volunteer of the Year through our Promotions Committee. Next, we have the Design Committee, which is Virgil Williams Jr., he's chair of this committee. And we awarded the Gold Hammer Award for Outstanding Renovations in Downtown. And we did it to the, we gave it to the LLJ Williams Properties Incorporated. This year, they replaced all the rotted wood and repainted three storefronts in downtown. And they didn't ask for a facade grant or anything to do it, they just did it to beautify the side of downtown. Now, Mr. Jim Lyons has passed away, and so we invited his wife and sisters, sisters to come to receive the award. No one, a lot of them, one's out of town and one was unable to drive, and so, but his wife came, is Nita Williams. And when she received the award, she said that it means so much to her because she remembers years ago Jim receiving the same award, and even though they were going through all kinds of amazing, difficult things in their lives, like, "We've gotta go, we gotta get that award." She said it meant so much to him, and that it means so much to her to win it even after he's passed away. And we had no idea. We just wanted to say, "Thank you for making your buildings pretty." And so that was really special. She, she was there, she brought her daughter and granddaughter to come and celebrate receiving this award. In economic restructuring, we did an online voting for Business of the Year, and all of these businesses received multiple votes. I, we were overwhelmed by the response. You could go on and vote. You'll see, hopefully you know a lot of these businesses. It was incredible to see what customers were saying about why they loved these local businesses. We want to put these together and just kind of help get the word out through the businesses to say, "You've done a good job. People, people are very pleased that you're here in Monroe." And we did have a winner, the one who got the most votes, look ahead, was Posh Boutique, which is a new business in 2014. And lastly, we wanted to thank all our sponsors. They, all these logos represent all of the sponsors that have come together to support downtown Monroe and the events and the things that we do in downtown. This is more sponsors than we've ever had. In the past, we would have fewer number and maybe some bigger dollar amounts, but it's almost, I really think it's almost better to have so many more people involved in giving what for their business is a really big amount and making this possible. So all of these people, all these businesses came together and say, "We support downtown." So we're, we're just incredibly grateful that they all did that. Go to the next one. The last thing that we mentioned at our dinners, I wanted everyone to know about Boost Monroe. This is another program with DDA that my husband is actually kind of spearheading and trying to get, recruit people to, and it's an opportunity for individuals to become boosters. And what that means is they'll give a dollar amount to a common plot where local businesses can apply every quarter to get a boost, to get grants, basically in amounts of $100 to $1,000 for all kinds of things. If they're gonna do a marketing campaign, they want to improve part of their building, they want to change a product line, need new inventory. It's a creative way to do more than just encourage facade improvements, to, to encourage entrepreneurship and business improvements, and help them kind of take some risks and say, "We're behind you. We want to boost you, we want to, we want to do this for you." And everyone who becomes a booster gets a vote. So this is an opportunity for individuals to become boosters. I would love for all of you to become boosters, and I think it's gonna be a really fun way for people to get invested in downtown on a very personal level. That's, you go to boostmonroe.com and find out more. All the forms are there. Our goal is to have 30 boosters by the end of the year so that we can start doing our first cycle of grants in the first quarter. So that's Boost Monroe. Any opinions? That's all I had. So that was the presentation that we went through. It's an incredible year in downtown, and it wouldn't be possible if not for the support of the city and of the council. You guys all look lovely on what we expect, and we're so grateful, and it makes it a wonderful place to work and serve. So thank you.
Thank you. Just, just one quick point on something she mentioned, that's about the parade coming up Thursday night. The DDA and downtown and state and her people have decided to really honor veterans at this parade that'll be, you know, riding or marching or whatever in front of the parade, where we can honor our veterans. It was interesting to me in talking whether we have, if I'm right, there's seven veterans of World War II.
Yes, I think so. We might have more now, but...
But you, I just think it's pretty amazing that we have that many World War II veterans, one of which that will be in the parade was at Normandy, and then in the Battle of the Bulge where he got a Purple Heart. Now, in his nineties, will be in our parade Thursday night. So I just, I think it's really great that we're honoring that, and I just wanted to make that public. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right, items of discussion coming up for next week, application for here in White Pack Sales, J&amp;V Food Mart, and we'll have adopt the 2015 council meeting schedule.